Welcome, everybody, to the October 9th, 2018, meeting of the Board of School Commissioners. May I have a motion to reopen the public business meeting of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Richardson, you getting this? Second? Second by Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor? And that controversial vote passes, Andy, are you going to vote to do this? Nine to zero. Thank you. I would like to call us to order and invite the JROTC of Baltimore Polytechnic Institute to present the colors, and our very own Dunbar High School Jazz Combo will perform the National Anthem. Please rise.
(inaudible)
I'd like to thank our, the members of the JROTC from Poly, Cadet Skylar Rozitsky, Commander, Cadet Amani Alexander, the National Flag Bear, Cadet Alicia Enriquez, Rifle Bear, Cadet Robertina Molina, Rifle Bear, and Cadet Danyea Braxton, State Flag Bear. I'd also like to thank and acknowledge our Dunbar High School Jazz Combo under the awesome direction of Mr. Charles Funn, Jonathan English. Do you want to raise your hand so we know who? That trumpet you just heard on the National Anthem, right there. Adashay Hill?
Adisha.
Adisha. Hill? Great. Anthony Brown? He's not here. Bria Williams? Jawan Gary? Christian Towns? Did I get that wrong?
Yes, ma'am.
Cool. And Emmanuel Parker. Thanks, ladies and gentlemen. Terrific. Next time, though, do Sir Duke. I love your rendition of Sir Duke. We're going to, before we do our moment of silence, we're going to let the band take a minute to gather up so we can be respectful during our moment of silence.
I'd like you to join me as we take time to recognize the passing of city school employees and students. Alicia Mukes was a teacher, an elementary teacher at Utah Marshburn Elementary for 13 years. She worked there for 13 years. She passed away on September 14, 2018. Sharon Forrest was a beloved pre-kindergarten teacher of 42 years who lost her battle with sickness. Ms. Forrest was not just a teacher for so many students in her building, but she was a matriarch, a caretaker, guardian, and cornerstone of the community. Ms. Forrest loved her students and fellow colleagues. Her impact will never be forgotten, as Forrest was a teacher at Liberty Elementary School. Marcus Brown was a 10th grader at Excel Academy at Francis M. Wood. He was a well-liked student. Marcus will be greatly missed by his family and school community and friends. We are extremely saddened by this loss and extend our support to his family and friends. Kania Kenley was a rising 7th grader at the Crossroads School. She was adventurous and had a close-knit group of friends. Kania loved to write, be creative, and to work with her peers. She will be greatly missed by her family, school community, and friends. Tyrese Glenn was a 9th grader at Excel Academy at Francis M. Wood. He was a well-liked student. Tyrese will be greatly missed by his family, school community, and friends, and we are saddened by his loss. Jamar Green was enrolled to start pre-kindergarten at Harlem Park this year. While we have not yet met Jamar in person, his teachers and the Harlem Park family were looking forward to him joining our family and are saddened that he will not be with us. Jamar will be greatly missed by his family and friends. Our entire school community sends our condolences to his family. Kamari Sutton was enrolled last year in 1st grade at Grove Park and was anticipated to join the 2nd grade at Calvin Rodwell this year. She was a sweet little girl with a bright smile. She loved to dance and sing. She thought the world of her older sister and liked to follow her around. Chimera was learning to read and loved to be in Ms. Wyatt's 1st grade class. She loved reading Dog Man in the classroom library without her shoes on. She also loved coloring with smelly markers and receiving special notes in her lunchbox. Her favorite saying was, "My teacher said." She will be greatly missed by her Grove Park and Calvin Rodwell school communities. Ethan Harris was a student at Frederick Elementary School. He loved going to school and those that helped him. Throughout his health battle, he would always say, "I can do anything. I can do everything forever." He was a brave little boy who will be deeply missed by his family, school community, and friends. Will you join me for a moment of silence? It's very sad to have to announce so many people from our school community this week.
Thank you. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the prior open-session meeting minutes and the closed-session summaries. Move by Commissioner Berkeley, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor? Motion passes nine-zero. I would like to ask for committee reports. I'm not sure if we've had committee meetings since the last board meeting. Has the Operations Committee met? I don't think so.
No, we haven't.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I didn't know if Commissioner Frank had a report to get, but we don't have a report to get this time.
Yeah, he gave it at the last meeting.
Yes, he did give it the last time. And we, our next meeting will be October 16th, in this room, October 16, 2018, at 10:00 AM until 11:30 AM.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
Policy Committee? Same thing, and your next meeting is?
Same day.
Same day at 3:30 to 16th. Teaching and Learning?
We did have a meeting.
Go ahead.
We did have a meeting, and we looked at some curriculum issues. I don't have my notes out here, but forgetting something, Commissioner Chinia, please speak for me. And I don't, I also don't remember right now when we meet next, but we did meet since the last meeting.
I'll announce the full meeting roster at the end of the meeting, so you're good.
You did a semi-annual update for special ed, and we also had an overview of the park results and the Bridge to Excellence Master Plan. So we got an overview of that in that committee meeting, and I believe it's coming before the Board soon also.
Terrific, thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, and we also had a report on the beginnings of the implementation of the language arts and the curriculum and the professional development that had taken place and is taking place for our teachers.
Great. I just have a few comments from the Board Chair. One, we'd like to welcome our newest Board Member, Vernon Reed. Welcome to the Board. We were sure to tell him, doesn't take much time, you don't got to come here very often, easy, pays good. We told him all those things. They're all wrong, but welcome. I, while there's not many people here, and I don't know who's watching, I want a flag for people, the Thursday night Board Forum on School Police and Firearms. We are going to use a slightly different signup procedure. We're going to start at 4:45, but we're going to keep the signup open until 6:15, so that if people arrive late, there's still a chance to sign in. We're going to still use the same three-minute per person, and I'm going to be a little bit tighter than I normally am, just because we're anticipating a lot of people, but there won't be a limit to 10. So if 100 people show up, we'll sit here until 100 people have a chance to have their say. So this is, this is a chance, there's not going to be any presentations, this is, this is us picking up on the conversations we've been having over the past number of, about a year, since we've been reviewing the discipline policy and the policing policies. We promised three years ago that when, after we took a full look at all of the kind of contextual policies, that we were going to return to this issue, because everything is a part of a larger whole, and so that's what we're doing. And so when the newspaper says that this Board has not taken a position, that is true. We're not repeating the same mistakes we made before. We want to hear from people, and while we know what some people think, we want to hear from everybody who wants to speak to us. So we welcome you to come and express your opinion on that topic at 6 o'clock this coming And with that, I would like to have a motion to approve the PEP Agenda. Move by Commissioner Hassan, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Bondima, all in favor? Motion passes in favor with Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Chinia, Kashani, Reed, Frank, Berkeley, Richardson. Motion passes nine-zero. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the CEO.
Thank you, Commissioner Kashani. It is good to see everyone this evening. Welcome to the full Board of Commissioners. I'd like to first begin this evening by welcoming Chief Grant Skinner for tonight's PEP Agenda. And as Chief Grant Skinner comes to the table, I also want to thank him publicly for also serving as the interim Chief of Staff while Chief Perkins Cohen is on a much-deserved mini-vacation this week. So, Chief Grant Skinner.
Good evening, Commissioners and Dr. Santalise. We have one appointment this evening, and I believe she is with us. Carrie Wenzel, currently a teacher at Hamden Elementary Middle School, is appointed Educational Specialist II for Math Professional Development, effective October 29th.
Good.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. So I would like to begin my portion of remarks this evening by discussing a recently completed study on the impact of the Community Eligibility Provision on students, families, and schools. The study was conducted by Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health, Maryland Hunger Solutions, and the Johns Hopkins Center for a Livable Future. The Community Eligibility Provision, or CEP, is a federal school meal funding option that allows schools to provide free breakfast and lunch to all students in a school or group of schools. Community eligibility removes barriers to participation in school meals, including stigma and the cost for students and their families. City schools implemented CEP in June 2015 for a four-year cycle, and we just re-enrolled for a second four-year cycle. With community eligibility, our staff no longer need to collect and process the school meal benefit application forms every year, which is a significant administrative, which is a significant administrative cost savings. We've seen tremendous increases in school lunch participation, and although we are still working to rectify challenges with this process and what it means for our undocumented families, our immigrant families, one of the things that we do know is that we remain committed to resolving that, but at the same time, city schools now serves an additional 10,000 school lunches every day since electing CEP. It's now my pleasure to introduce Dr. Susan Gross and Tamlin Kelly to review the results of the impact study. Dr. Gross has over 20 years of experience in maternal and child nutrition. She is an assistant scientist in the Population, Family, and Reproductive Health Department at Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. Tamlin Kelly is a senior manager with Share Our Strengths, No Kid Hungry Maryland Campaign. Dr. Gross and Tamlin Kelly, I welcome you, and I'd like to let everybody know they did this, a similar presentation for our senior staff on the impact, and so we are thrilled that they are joining us this evening to share with the Board and the larger public their findings. Thank you both.
So we're really thankful to be here, to have the opportunity to share the results of the study that we recently completed about the impact of the Community Eligibility Provision in Baltimore City Schools.
So this study started with a question that was brought to me by Maryland Hunger's Lotions. They said, "Now that we have free meals universally in Baltimore City, what is the impact that has on our families, our students, and our schools? And is there a way to evaluate that?" And I was happy to say, "I think we can." So our study was threefold. The first part of our study was using Maryland State Department of Education data to look at school-level data, and we compared the Baltimore City Schools to a matched sample of schools that were eligible for the Community Eligibility Provision but did not implement it in a separate school district, which we will call the Comparison School District. We looked at outcomes related to attendance, suspensions, lunch participation, and graduation and promotion rates. We looked at data over a time period, so we looked at before the implementation and post-implementation to make sure we could look at the impact. The second part was focus groups in the Baltimore City Schools. We wanted to hear the voices of high school students, so we had two focus groups with high school students. We had two focus groups with parents of students in another school, and then we had in-depth interviews with stakeholders at the administrative level, principals, food service managers, and community school liaisons. Finally, we did a survey. The survey was a household survey, and we surveyed families of Baltimore City Schools in five Baltimore City Schools, and also interviewed families from three comparison district schools, specifically about food access and food insecurity. So what did we find? We found that there was benefit on the school level. We saw improved attendance rates in elementary and middle schools in Baltimore City in comparison with their matched schools. And most importantly, we saw that more schools improved their attendance rate, or their, improved attendance rates compared to the comparison city schools, the comparison district schools. We also saw improvements in 10th grade promotion rates. And finally, we were asked to look at chronic absenteeism. We only had data for 2015 and 2016 school years, so that was still during the implementation phase, but we did see that in Baltimore City Elementary Schools that there was 68% of the schools had improved chronic absentee levels, which means their chronic absenteeism went down, compared to 61% of the comparison district. It was more impressive between the middle schools, that 64% of the Baltimore City middle schools had an improved chronic absenteeism rate compared to 37% of the comparison district schools.
In addition to the benefits that we've seen for schools, we also saw benefits for individual students. As Dr. Santalise mentioned, we've seen more students eating school lunch, 10,000 additional school lunches per day, which is quite remarkable. We're also seeing, we've also seen that there's decreased financial barriers to accessing food, so now all city students have access to school breakfast and lunch. So it's just like anything else in the school. So if a student needs a Band-Aid, or if a student needs textbooks, every student gets access to those, regardless of their household income, and now it's, the food is treated the same way, which is so critical, because just like textbooks are needed in order to learn, you have to have food in order to learn too. And so that barrier has been taken away, as well as the stigma that previously would sometimes surround school meals as being something that was only for the poor kids or the kids that were in need, and now it's more of a level playing field. We've also seen benefits at the family level, and this is, I think, the most exciting outcome that we found in our study. So as Dr. Gross mentioned, we measured food insecurity. For those who aren't familiar, this is a, this is a phenomenon that happens when a household has limited or uncertain access to enough healthy food. People in food insecure households may skip meals, they may go hungry, or they may eat less than what they need. The reason why we care so much about this is there's been a lot of research that has shown that children in food insecure households are more likely to repeat a grade in school, they're more likely to be suspended, to be absent, to have poor academic performance, to have poor health, the list goes on and on. So this is a really important measure. What we found is remarkable. Students attending Baltimore City Schools were nearly three times less likely to be food insecure, as compared to students attending a CEP-eligible but not participating comparison district school. We also found that food insecurity rates were much higher than what we expected. So as you can see from this chart, food insecurity rates were quite high, even though they were much better in the schools, in city schools, the CEP. And finally, we wanted to close with some information about the focus groups. So this was a really important part of our study that collected this data from people who are impacted. As Dr. Gross mentioned, we did two groups in Benjamin Franklin High School, two groups with parents, and also we did five administrator interviews. And this is just a sampling of some of the quotes that we received during those focus groups. And also in your packet, we have a more in-depth information about the study and some additional quotes. There was a lot of great information that we got from parents about how much they love the Food for Thought program that's at Hampstead Hill, and some great feedback from students about what kind of food they like, that might be helpful with food nutrition, so some of that's in your packet as well.
But I want to say that one of the most startling things was the idea that, and even in our focus groups, there was a lot of mention of food insecurity and not having access to food before CEP was introduced. And now it's such a relief to be able to know that you can go to school and eat, and knowing that their children are fed, and no worries about having enough money on account or having to apply, that it was, really, it was startling.
Yeah, we had one administrator, for example, who said that before CEP, they had a problem with children stealing lunch. So, you know, we see these very real issues on the ground, and a lot of that, that need has been taken away. The second quote here from a parent I thought was really powerful, just talking about how things change throughout the year. It may be that at the beginning of the year that things were going well, and they had a good job, and they were able to pay for school meals, but then perhaps work slows down and they don't have money, and so, and that's the reality for many families. It's, they're struggling at different times of the year, and sometimes they're not. But with CEP, it doesn't matter. There's access to free breakfast and lunch throughout the entire year. That's it. But we're happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Frank?
Thank you. We heard earlier tonight from a school principal about a dinner program that provide dinner. I don't know the program, I didn't quite hear all the acronyms. Can you speak to that, and how does that relate to these programs?
There's another, in addition to school breakfast and school lunch, there's an at-risk after-school supper program as well. Liz, what's that off? Oh, yeah. Do you want to speak to?
Last year, we started offering-
Liz, why don't you just for everybody? We know most people know who you are, but just in case.
My name is Elizabeth Marqueta. I'm the Director of Food and Nutrition Services. And last year, we started offering after-school supper meals district-wide at eligible schools. So that's what you might have been hearing about.
What makes a school eligible for supper?
They have to have an after-school program that doesn't restrict who can participate. So say, like a varsity football team, that might not be eligible, but if there are other programs or something that is open to all, so it can be multiple programs for multiple students, and students who are at school but might not be participating in any of those programs can also go and get supper, siblings.
And just last question, is that funded federally, or is that a different source?
Yeah, that is USDA-run supper program.
Thank you.
Commissioner McFadden?
There is a trend in enrollment declining, particularly in the past three years. We only have data tonight from year 15, you said, and 16, where we don't have any information from '16, '17. where we don't have any information from '16, '17 at all available, to see how the program has impacted enrollment.
So when the study was initially funded-
Or '17, '18, too.
Yeah, '17, '18. Unfortunately, because the study ended this spring, we didn't have access to the newer school years. That there is, we are continuing to study this. So we will have more data coming forward. It's a matter of cleaning the data and being able to put it into analysis because it's a little more complex than just looking at a trend. Is that we, we are matching schools so that we have a comparison district that has a population that is similar to the Baltimore City School that we're matching it to, as opposed to just any school. So we are continuing the data analysis.
And the chronic absentee data is the one that's more limited. The, in general, the data that we collected was from the '12, '13 school year to the '16, '17 school year.
Commissioner Richardson?
This is awesome. So thank you for this. I just have a question about classroom behaviors. Like, were you able to survey any teachers to see if there was a difference, even in classroom behaviors, as a result of kids now having access to food?
That was not, unfortunately, a part. But we did hear from food, food service managers about the kids behaving better.
Commissioner Hassan?
Thank you also for your work. Were you able to segregate the data between schools that do breakfast-to-go and schools that require a cafeteria line for breakfast, as far as participation or attendance?
We did look, the thing that we did look at was the Maryland Meals for Achievement participation because that varied across the years. And we didn't find a difference in our results by that analysis. We were limited in the high school and middle school analyses because our comparison district didn't have that many eligible high schools. It's, a lot of high schools across the state don't meet the criteria. So it was hard to find comparison high schools.
Were you able to see any differences within schools within Baltimore City? Between those that offer breakfast-to-go and those that require a cafeteria line circulation?
We didn't do that analysis, but I really appreciate that question because making sure that breakfast is accessible is a really important piece that I know Liz and I are working on together. And making sure that it's after the bell is really the key to making sure that kids have access to it.
Glad you asked that question because this breakfast after the bell, I know share our strength, and that's like a big deal, deal. It, so, and sometimes it comes down to the principal, or not the classroom teacher, and their comfort with it. So I think that, I assume, Liz, that we're still encouraging that and making that happen more and more because it makes a huge difference.
Yeah, I will also say that they looked at the adoption of community eligibility in June of 2015 forward. And breakfast, we had under something called Provision Two, where we were already serving it free for a couple of years. So the biggest change that they were looking at was the change in, you know, the cost of lunch.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
Commissioner Frank?
You presented a lot of data. And what's really significant is you see the benefits of the program, which is useful. What did we learn from the study that might cause us to deliver the program differently or increase the benefits?
So I want to say one thing before I go on, is that for the food security part of the study, we only could go with schools that principals gave us approval to come interview households. Which means that in both the school districts, we received approval in schools that may have been even more at risk for food insecurity than others. But what I think we really learned was that household food insecurity is a big issue, even and we saw it across, across the two districts. But I think we underestimated. I think that our high school students really spoke to the fact that household food insecurity impacts high school students in a different way because they are often the ones in the household who will go without if a younger sibling needs to eat. So having and securing food as a high school student is hard because there's not as many avenues. So this is a great avenue for them. I think that, so addressing food insecurity at all levels is really important. And just knowing that our programs go beyond just our students. They go on to the family. And that's, that is really, and the community in general.
Yeah, I appreciate that question as well. I think in your handout, on page six, it talks about, more about food insecurity. Nationally, about 16% of all US households with children are food insecure. But in city schools, we found that 34% of the households that we surveyed were food insecure. So it's much higher. So even though we did see a benefit to CEP, we still saw a very high rate, which is disturbing. And to me, means we need to be doing more.
I was just curious, and you may have mentioned this already. What other districts are doing, doing what we're doing in the state of Maryland?
There are only two other districts that are using CEP district-wide, meaning every single school in the district is CEP. So that's Dorchester and Somerset County on the eastern shore. But there are other parts of the state where there are individual schools that are eligible. So there's a number of schools in Washington County. There's four schools in Baltimore County. There's two in Howard County. So there's a number of CEP schools, but there are only three districts that are CEP district-wide, like Baltimore City.
And across the country, we know that only 55% of the schools that are eligible are, have adopted CEP.
Well, again, ladies, I want to thank you all for the study that actually really gives us important information verification, not only for the board, for the public. And to Liz, I will say again, thank you for your work in being one of the biggest advocates for the power of feeding young people and their families through school. So thank you for your work, too. Thank you very much. I want to also take a moment to recognize that October is National Principals Month, which in some ways, yeah, we can all, does everybody give a hoot? But when I, when I realized October was National Principals Month, I felt like my dad, when I used to ask him when I was a kid, "Well, I know we have Mother's Day and Father's Day, but when's Kids' Day?" And he would say, "Every day is Kids' Day." And I feel-
Every parent says that.
That's right. Well, and I, but I, but I think it is also true for principals who work every day to lead from their space. And I just want to take a minute to say that true leadership, particularly in the principalship, is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week job. As much as I still try to harass and prod our school leaders to take time for themselves and their families and their own wellness, I know too intimately just how much families who have a principal in their midst really do share of themselves with the larger community on behalf of the kids that they serve. Leading a school is one of, if not the toughest job in a school district. And I include my own current position as CEO within that. Careers that can also be difficult and rewarding. I think the only other job that would go neck and neck with a principal for that would be that of teacher. But I also want you to know that I speak for everyone in the city school's family when I say, "Thank you." Thank you to our principals, our assistant principals, for your commitment, your dedication, your tireless efforts on behalf of the students we serve. You push yourselves, you push your teams, and you do it all for the benefit of our young people. I want you to know that during my school visits throughout the month of September, the first few weeks in October, I have been incredibly heartened just by the energy that are in so many schools, the number of school leaders who know that the work is hard, but recommit themselves daily to making sure that we serve our young people as whole people, but that we never waver from the goal of educational excellence. Principals, the results that we received last year, the increased number of schools that had large gains in students at proficient and advanced are really due to your leadership. And I tell everyone, I am no fool. It is wonderful to be able to sit here and lead a school district like city schools, but without high-quality school leaders. This work would be pointless in a lot of cases. And so what I often say is, you probably, most young people I meet on the street don't necessarily know who the CEO is. But everybody knows two people. They know who their teacher is, and they know who their principal is. So I want to thank you, school leaders, for all the work you do every day. And we really do appreciate you. One of the other pieces I just want to draw to folks' attention is that in the month of October, in my effort to really get out and continue to interface and talk with families outside of just when I see people in the grocery store, Target, we will be sponsoring, I'll be inviting folks on Tuesday, October 16, 2018, to our series that supports our blueprint focus on literacy. And it's reading with the CEO at the Pratt, our colleagues at the Enoch Pratt Library System, Heidi Daniels, who's the President and CEO of Enoch Pratt, and her team, along with my team, Kristy Lewis and others, Family and Community Engagement. We've launched this series, and it gives me a chance to shake off the CEO hat for a bit and go back to read alouds and talking with families about literacy, how to support their children in reading. So please join us on Tuesday, October 16, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM at the Pennsylvania Avenue branch of the Enoch Pratt Free Library. And then, I've got a busy week that week. On Thursday, October 18, we will be continuing this year's community conversations with the CEO. We have the pleasure and honor, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, of hosting families at the Shake and Bake Family Fund Center on Pennsylvania Avenue. And we will have a focused conversation. We'll have dinner and talk a bit about how families can plan ahead in choosing a middle or high school, learn more about the choice process, ask questions, push on experience, hear a little bit about some of the changes and supports we have in store for families. So I want to thank our Family and Community Engagement team for putting that. I'm sorry?
And then roller skating?
And of course, yeah, sure. And the roller skating.
With the CEO. Roller skating with the CEO.
That's right. Like, yeah, forget the reading, right? Everybody's like, we want to roller skate with the CEO. But it would be great to see everybody out.
I don't, actually.
You really don't? Actually, you know, I'm a pretty mean roller skater. So anyway, but we look forward to hosting folks at that event. And then finally, I also wanted to provide an update on the process to build a new Patterson High School. We had a number of members of the staff and families, and the school leader, principal, came out and really shared with the board about their desire for, to make sure that the new Promise Patterson High School is in fact being built. We unequivocally said, both myself and with the board's full support, that we are pushing forward with the building of Patterson High School. And as many of you are aware, we submitted revised EAP to the Interagency Commission on School Construction back in May. We've been waiting since then for Patterson to be included for a vote on the IAC's agenda so that the project can move forward. While we were initially encouraged to learn that Patterson would be included on this morning's meeting agenda, and I had hoped to be able to announce the full board support, the IAC's board, this board has already given support, to that, the IAC ultimately decided to delay their vote until November, which will mark a full six months since our submission of the revised EAP. The IAC also chose to hold a vote this morning on the, I'm sorry, not to hold the vote, this morning, on the other four city schools projects included on their agenda. These include Highland Town 237, James Mosher, Commodore John Rogers, and Robert Coleman. We do remain troubled by the delay and its implications for our construction timeline. We will continue to update shareholders as further information becomes available. I probably had something else on my mind. Thank you, stakeholders. Stakeholders. Thanks, that's fine. All the folks involved. How about that? How about all the folk that have a, have an interest in these schools and who are watching? We want you to know that both myself and the board, the full 21st Century Schools team, and I want to thank Sheri and the full team, we continue to advocate, to ask questions. Again, we are committed to all of this moving forward. But I thought it was important for the community to know of today's decision and delay. And without further ado, I turn it back to Commissioner Kishani.
I rarely, and I may never do it again, try to say something after she says something. But just make sure everybody caught that last announcement. We're ready. The MSA is ready. The guys with the shovels are ready. The electricians are ready. The school communities are ready. And somebody at the state said, "Not so fast." So just remember that when the timeline changes. We were ready in May. Just saying, for what it's worth. And with that, we're gonna, I want to review the items on the consent agenda. And as is our practice, if there's something you want to pull, we'll pull it and come back to it. And then I'll ask the same question again after public comment to see if there's any other items. First item on the consent agenda, Policy 8.01, excuse me, Item 8.01, Policy GBM Temporary Employment, second reader. Policy IHAMA, Heroin and Opioid Addiction Education, second reader. Waiver request, FKA for the United Way. Two procurement items, both of which were discussed at a public teaching and learning meeting. Item 10.01, Apex Learning Inc. and Edmentum Inc. Item 10.02, Maryland Science Center. Okay, since there are no questions, I will repeat the procurement items after public comment. And then we'll see if we have any, any other items to pull. But as of now, everything will go by consent. It's just a few minutes before 6:00, so I feel comfortable moving into the public comment stage of the meeting. Of the special recognized, specially recognized groups, my agenda tells me that we only have our friends from P-CAB here. So, and it says that Joseph Kane is going to speak to us. Shante, are you also going to come up? Okay. And then I'll, we'll look at and see if anybody else is here from the other groups. But as of now, that's the only sign up.
So, good evening, Dr. Sanz Lees is school board. Before we get started, I want to say welcome to Commissioner Reed. I was, had the privilege of being part of the community, the mayor's community panel, advisory panel, that helped push his recommendation forward. And I also look forward to the other recommendations. It's pretty good. So, welcome to the School Board. As we get started, as you all know, that P-CAB is, every meeting, we're going to rotate who speaks. So my name is Joseph Kane. I'm a new member to P-CAB. Currently, I'm the policy chair. So you guys got to bear with me, okay? So, parents and communities, and parents and community stakeholders want to be part of the success of city schools. However, we need your help to ensure that policies and guidances leaving your authority are being executed at a local level. This past week, I had the privilege of talking to some parents after hours who had some issues with their school concerning the way punishment was being used, as far as recess uses punishment. And another school had an issue where teachers were being discouraged being part of PTO. These are, in my opinion, these low-hanging issues that are distracting from the work of really serving children, putting children first. And that can be easily addressed. Luckily for parents, luckily for the parents that came forward with these issues, there's a remedy within the Baltimore City Public Schools structure. And that remedy is the School Family Council. School Family Council are the engine at the local school. Believe that a functional School Family Council can really drive a school forward, push a school forward. But we need to make sure that School Family Councils are functioning at our schools to really assist with these low-hanging issues that arise. I became interested in joining P-CAB shortly after Heat Gate in 2018, right, early in January. I was convinced that P-CAB is the place to ensure that parents and community voice is heard if we use it properly. However, as Policy Chair, one of my first questions when we came here was, where does P-CAB fit in the policy development, according to the current policy, BGA? And currently, there isn't any language that says where P-CAB falls in. So it's kind of at the mercy of each administration or school board members, how we come in the picture of receiving policy. So we will really appreciate your help in kind of finalized and putting in stone some language to really show where P-CAB falls in play in terms of how policy development implemented and executed. Because we really want to be partners and live up to the spirit in which P-CAB was developed. And I think we're best served if we figure out how to put language in the policy to reflect that. Also, let me get to the notes that we have here. We think that it's commendable that the master plan is in alignment with the 2018 Blueprint for Success. However, we have some concerns with removing the Park ELA 2 test, when it has shown the highest success rate of all high school park testing. Secondly, as an advisory board, we're concerned that the master plan is lacking in parent and community feedback. The CAO's office has an open response period of one month. During that one month, the only way to provide feedback is through the, for the master plan, is through survey and email, as to our knowledge. Additionally, nothing was presented at P-CAB for review concerning the master plan. So we're really asking that we can get the CAO's office to P-CAB, so we can really kind of give that feedback as we move forward with the master plan. And we are happy to see most of the changes implemented into Policy IHAMA, that's been addressed later. Our recommendations that, about how, so we had a recommendation about students learning how to implement, how to use the drug, administer the drug. And we wanted to see some more, that get addressed a little more. We don't feel satisfied that it was addressed properly, though it's processed, and we want to just bring that back to the forefront. I mean, Shante may have something.
Shante?
Thank you, Commissioners and Dr. Santalisis. I'm sure I'm going to run over the 30 seconds, I didn't know Joe had so much to say. So my name is Shante Guy, I'm the Treasurer for P-CAB. Just a quick report on a couple of things. As you all know, our bylaws require the establishment of five committees. The Executive Committee, Finance, Community Engagement, Policy, and Teaching and Learning. Membership on each of those committees has been established, and the work is in progress. We look forward to providing you with updates on the committees as we move forward in the coming weeks. We would also like to let the board, parents, and community members know that as P-CAB prepares for Thursday's special board meeting, that we want to hear from parents, that we take our job of representing the voice of our community in its entirety very seriously. And it's because of this that we created a survey and invite members of the community to take it, to share your thoughts with us on arming school police officers. While P-CAB doesn't and will not have a position on this until it reviews the survey results from parents, so that we are speaking as true representatives and not 15 individuals on this team, we absolutely want to encourage parents to join those hundreds of folks who have already voted on the survey, so that your voice is reflected in our official statement and our official position on Thursday. That survey can be found on our Facebook page. Thank you. Other questions?
Just a couple of things regarding the P-CAB's role in policy. You were well represented by both Commissioner Hassan as the Policy Chair and our Board Exec, Christian Gant. And we're, we got it. So we're, we've got some work to do to, to figure out the right next steps, but you've been heard on that.
Thank you so much. I think that we're also going to be looking into Policy BDD, given our conversations with the Board Executive Officer.
Great.
Thank you.
Commissioner McFadden?
Do you mind letting us know which schools are being, are turning parents away from the PTO?
Yeah, I don't have a problem publicly.
Off the record, we can't do that.
Yeah.
You don't want to do that publicly.
Yeah, we don't name names, right? But I do think that,
You should be, to talk, to talk to him, I mean, just with respect, but I think if you want to know, you should have, definitely talk to him.
And I would just ask if you could, if you could also forward, I don't know how we're doing it officially, either to the Board Exec or the Chief of Staff, so that we can make sure that the Chief of Schools and Family and Community Engagement, so that staff can follow up as well.
You can feel free, the Board Exec and the Chief of Staff, for different reasons, weren't able to be here tonight, but just because they're not sitting here, follow that same procedure. Send it to the Chief of Staff and the Board Exec, and they'll get it.
We will make sure that we have the Chair and/or Vice Chair send that along.
That's terrific.
And I would just like to say, as time goes on with that, and that goes for not just kind of the PTO, but also the SFC, that's the kind of on-the-ground information that we need, so that we can follow up.
Commissioner McFadden, and then Commissioner Hassan, I just want him to finish his thought.
Thank you, Commissioner Kishani. And just for clarity, Thursday's, it's a forum and not a board meeting, so we won't be doing any type of voting or anything on Thursday. It's just to get information from the community about the school police policy.
Thank you. We're referencing the voting on our survey. So, yeah, yeah, we actually have a survey that's out there on our Facebook page that allows parents.
I just wanted to be clear.
Because P-CAB members are going to be signing up for the public comment, and we want to make sure that our voice is reflective of the parents and community that we serve. And so we have a survey out there that allows parents to vote on their position, so that we're representing them as a singular voice.
Commissioner Hassan?
Thank you. Earlier in exec session, Commissioner, Chair Kishani asked us to pull Item 6.01 for a public discussion later, and that's the Policy Compliance Report on Policy ADF. And since that's the policy that specifically says that recess
Yeah, okay.
is not to be taken away for behavioral or academic reasons, if you could also forward that information to schools that might need some additional love and attention and understanding that policy, that would be great.
Definitely. I think that's the spirit in which I brought this here, is that refreshers, you know, would be useful in these type of situations, where parents are equipped with the knowledge, but it's just not connecting all the dots.
Yeah, and I don't think any principals are out there saying, "Let's violate policy." I think, but they may just not know, or they're overwhelmed. And so being able to give them some targeted support would be great.
Yeah, we got a compliance update on the wellness policy, just as a report to the board. But the policy development process for that policy was so exemplary, and so many people were involved up and down the line, that we decided to pull it and just have a public presentation, so that we can all see the updates and shine a spotlight on this kind of stuff, so we all have a refresher for how awesome that policy is and how important it is to implement it. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd like to welcome our first guest. Is she here? There she is.
Sir, before we go on BTU is here. Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. Hi.
I said I was going to go back and see if other groups were here, and I'm sitting there right, looking at my Enrollment Task Force buddy, and there you are.
I'm here. For those of you that don't know, my name is Cynthia Shogwist. I'm a field representative with the Baltimore Teachers Union. Good evening, Commissioners of the Board, thank you for acknowledging me and having me. At a previous board meeting, my colleague spoke about the mold issues at Callaway Elementary. That's school number 251. Facilities has been working on remediation. However, during that time, the classes have been relocated to the multipurpose room for the last month. I spoke with the first grade teacher today, who informed me that that means that 50-plus first graders have been learning on a stage outside of their classroom, away from their supplies and resources for an entire, the entire first month of school. They were cleared to go back to their classrooms yesterday. However, one of the two first grade teachers called me this morning because now her classroom is flooded. This was caused by a valve that they knew was faulty and had been leaking in the past. It should not have been turned back on, was turned back on in error. And so these children are still outside of their classroom. She has a class of 26 first graders. They were told to make do while they learn, again, on this stage in the multipurpose room. We continue to have issues with mold and heat in several of the schools throughout the district. We do our best to keep facilities informed when we are made aware, but these are health and safety issues. As of last week, the BTU had 22 grievances and appeals at the board level, awaiting either hearings or decisions. The oldest of these cases is over a year old. We were recently told that the grievances filed this school year wouldn't be able to be heard until at the earliest February of, or March of 2019. We'd also like to mention the number of pieces of information that the BTU is entitled to per our collective bargaining agreement that we did not receive. This list ranges from class size averages and limits to our entire bargaining unit, which we no longer have access to since the Supreme Court Janus versus AFSMI case. We only get a list of dues-paying members. We don't get the list of sabbatical denial reasonings, transfer and vacancy lists. There are, I think, a total of 26 different pieces of information that we have negotiated that we don't get. Finally, we'd like to address the issues that we're hearing around substitutes. It's unclear whether there's a shortage of viable candidates or whether administrators are simply not reaching out to find them. But every time a substitute isn't in a classroom where they should be, it means our teachers lose prep periods. It means our paraeducators are pulled from classrooms where they should be and teachers have planned for, and students are prepared to have them in. Or our students are being doubled up, put into classrooms, you know, to create, moving all of first grade into one room for that day. This, and this is just speaking of homeroom teachers specifically. This isn't even talking about paraeducators, secretaries, resource teachers, et cetera, et cetera. There's not even a pool to pull from when they are absent. Thank you all again for your time, that's all I have, but I'm here for questions.
Thanks, Cindy. You mentioned a number of things, I'm going to, I want to comment on one specifically about the backlog of appeals and hearings. Since our Board Exec is not here, I made a note of that. And I will follow up to find out what that's about, so that if there's a reasonable explanation, that you guys can get it. But would you, on that particular note, would you please, again, since he's not here, send Christian at the board office an email about that and copy me, so we can follow up on it? Because I inquired about the timing of the appeals and hearings just a couple of weeks ago. And in the cases I was asking about, there, there was in each instance a good explanation, but since you're raising it, I want to check into it again.
I would be happy to, thank you.
Thanks. Good. Okay, with that, are there any other specially recognized groups? CCAC, PTA, AFSMI, Student Congress? Okay. Our first guest is Ms. Kim Truheart.
Good evening. Three minutes is not enough. And because I missed the last two meetings, no?
No, 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 no. This is not a cumulative situation we're in here.
I tried.
Use it or lose it.
Okay, I want to thank you for the budget workshop that I attended at Douglas. It was refreshing. It started to reveal some level of transparency that I've been longing for. So I'm appreciative that you authorized the spending of a couple of dollars to pay Alavue to facilitate that for us. Looking forward to the continuing conversation, for sure. Hearing all of this discussion this evening, and for the last eight years, I'm still looking for the internal audit reports to be disclosed to the public. And I think there's value if we're really going to be transparent around here. So I throw it out on the table again as a request. And I'm going to keep going to Annapolis and continue to put in my bill to try to get those reports from you. Our new board member, Mr. Reed, I would have really appreciated you giving him three minutes to talk, so we could hear from him.
Sure.
I watched the mayor's swearing-in of three board members the other day, and that was good, but he was not there, so.
His was today.
Separate?
His was today.
Okay. But I think in the interest of him being a new city representative and speaking on my behalf, that I'd like to hear something from him. I was on the radio yesterday, talking, answering a question that was posed. School systems spend $7 million annually on school police. How could that money be better spent? And in particular, there were some options thrown out, to include school counselors, since we only have 85, psychologists, social workers. My response, being on the radio, was, "It's not an either-or situation here. And we need to be clear that we need more money, and that's the bottom line." And so I was asked, "Well, what can people do?" And I said, "Vote yes, November 6th, on the lockbox initiative." Now, this morning, I got a phone call from one of the sponsors of that bill. And I'm not really sure, I mean, I appreciated the phone call, but I think it may have been in line with getting credit. And I wasn't in the mood to give nobody credit, because we haven't done anything yet. So as soon as that ballot initiative passes, then I'll give credit where credit is due. But in the meantime, I think we have a responsibility to let the public know, because it is clear, a lot of folks are unaware that there is an opportunity to put all the casino money in a lockbox that these crazy politicians can't touch. Vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. There we go. Our next guest is Sekou Casimou.
Madam CEO, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and for those who may not know me, my name is Sekou Casimou, and I'm a volunteer in the public school system and recreation centers. My first assignment was at Matthew Henson Elementary School, and then Renaissance Academy High School, Liberty Elementary School, more so the recreation side, the Recreation Center, and now Shake and Bake. I really enjoy Shake and Bake, because the students come from all over the city, and not just one neighborhood. My concern is the same as it's been for a while now, arming our police officers. The recent shooting at Marie Elementary Middle School is very disturbing. Now, I'm a male, and I understand what males respect. Now, at the risk of being called a male chauvinist, pig, or whatever, women really have a hard time understanding the man, the male mentality. Males need authority figures in their life that enforce the rules and make them behave. And I tell the children down at Shake and Bake, "You got to learn to obey the rules in here, because if you don't, you're not going to obey the rules in the street. And you're going to suffer for disobeying the rules in the street." So again, I was out of circulation for a while. I had a hip replacement in July, I'm still recuperating, and I'm going to have to pass on this roller skating that y'all are going to do Thursday. going to do Thursday, I mean, what, the 18th? And I can't see my doctor there October 20th. He won't give me the green light, I mean, until November the 20th. Shucks. But be that as it may, I'm still litigating that case because I feel strongly about it. In fact, I filed a amended complaint today to correct some deficiencies in the original. I'm hoping that y'all are going to see the light and not make the judge have to decide the issue. Because since the last time we had this discussion, there's been a lot of school shootings. There have been gun confiscations in our city schools. And again, that incident at that elementary middle school was very disturbing because psychopathic personalities are getting younger and younger. And I see it at Shaken Bay. So that's it for now. I'll see y'all Thursday.
Thank you. I appreciate seeing you again. I've wondered where you were, and I hope your recovery continues. And I'm sorry you can't roller skate with the CEO.
I just, I do just, I'm looking at the team, and they're looking at me like, folks are assuming that there's roller skating.
I'm making this up, by the way.
Please don't put that out there because this is not roller skating.
I'm making this up. I won't say it again.
And then when there's a long line, I'm going to say, please see Commissioner Kishani for tickets for when you go.
I am an accident waiting to happen. I'm not signing up. Having heard from public comment, I want to ask again if there's any additional items from the consent agenda that anybody wants to pull. Okay. With that, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda. There were two policies and a waiver and two procurement items.
Move.
Moved by Commissioner Frank. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan Bandima, Chinny Kishani-Reed, Frank Berkeley-Richardson, motion passes nine zero. With that, we're going to move to the information discussion portion of the agenda. I want to note, there was an item on there, first reader on policy BBB board membership appointment that has been deferred to a future meeting, so we will not be discussing that tonight. So the first presentation is the Bridge to Excellence City Schools Master Plan 2018.
Good evening, Dr. Santelisus. I'm Casey Mengele, Special Assistant to the Chief Academic Officer. Tonight, I will be doing a quick overview of the information that is included in our Bridge to Excellence City Schools Master Plan for 2018. Before I go through the deck, I do want to acknowledge PCAB's comments. We've received feedback to that effect during the Teaching and Learning Committee, and so the Chief Academic Office did reach out to PCAB, and it looks as though we are on the agenda to be able to speak with them on the 25th. So it is during our open window for feedback and definitely looking forward to that opportunity. And appreciate them fitting us into their agenda. Before I get going, what you will see here is something that you have seen before. This is our final year in the Bridge to Excellence Master Plan as it is currently conceived of by the state. Next year, the model, the format, the template, the questions we're being asked, the information we're being asked to provide, is likely to change as far as we are aware from MSDE. So at this point, this is an update to the master plan that we had submitted five years ago, and this is to be the last of its like until MSDE provides additional guidance for future years. The Bridge to Excellence Master Plan really came about as a way for the states to have all local education agencies identify how they're improving student achievement, eliminating achievement gaps, making adjustments based on the data that we're seeing each year, and how we're aligning our areas of focus into our key budgets, particularly federal The Bridge to Excellence is required under the following House bills and annotated codes. And the following slides provide a little bit of detail on each of those. I won't spend too much time on them as we've gone over those each year. First, we have House Bill 999. This bill here really requires us to outline our goals, objectives, and strategies regarding academic performance of students in special education, students with limited English proficiency, and students failing to meet or failing to make progress toward meeting state performance We also have the House Bill 412 and Senate Bill 533, which asks us to identify all of our assessments and assessment strategies as outlined in order to best understand our student performance. Pardon me. What I want to highlight in this evening's presentation largely is the blueprint overlay. Last year, you may recall that we had just sort of gotten the blueprint off the ground when we needed to be writing the master plan, right? They sort of happened side by side. And so we were able to tease up in last year's master plan that we were focusing in three unique areas in order to really move the work of the district. So this year, what we've done is incorporated some of the what that has happened under the blueprint and really where we are with that strategy. We've also updated the park data, included our academic goals and some minor adjustments there, and then provided the assessment administration overview, which the state has actually asked for something different from us this year. It's not this massive chart, rather, it's a highlight associated with our key strategies. So very quickly, what the master plan has offered us to do in the last two years is to really just tee up the blueprint and start aligning the language of the master plan with the work that we've been doing in the blueprint. So what I have in the next few slides, you've all seen in the August presentation that was done on the blueprint update, so showing our mission and vision, the alignment to literacy, wholeness, and leadership. And then in each area, and please let me know if it's okay to just go over these, this really is what was presented in August. It just shares our vision, our key strategies in order to meet this vision, and finally, where we are with regard to each area. So first, to student wholeness, providing a quick update in our blueprint, I'm sorry, in our master plan on intensive learning sites for both SEL and restorative practices as well as at the district level. We've then done the same in literacy, providing very quick, yes.
Casey, I just want to, when you, when, in the very beginning.
Yes.
The executive summary for wholeness.
Uh huh.
This is just something that I, I know we've seen parts of this in different configurations for different reasons, but something really struck me when I was looking at this before the meeting. Item number three under student wholeness says, provide a range of activities that ignite student passions. I love that sentence. So now if you go to the, and the intent behind it, if you go to the next slide.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to point, what struck me was that there's, as far as I can tell, in the way this strategy is framed in those three boxes, nothing in those three boxes ignites passion. It might address my social, emotional learning needs.
Sure.
It might help me do better conflict resolution and resolve my issues differently. I get the inside out is with student athletes, so I'll give you a little bit on that. But I do think as a general proposition on the student wholeness work, this has been a consistent thing. And when we talk about the wellness policy update, there was some language in there that I want to flag when we have a public comment. I just, if, if because of the phases of implementation, it means that we really just need to focus initially on the student emotional SEL.
Sure.
And the restorative practice, I think we at least need to acknowledge it that we're not as other focused on the art, the student passions.
The enrichment pieces.
Because these things aren't, they don't elicit passions from kids, I don't, in general.
Fair enough.
They're correcting something. So that just really struck me, and I'm hoping over time this starts to shift a little bit.
No, fair enough.
Or it gets more expansive.
I certainly appreciate that feedback, Dr. S.
Yeah, no, and as do I. I would say, though, that I don't, I still don't think of this work, though, as fixing kids. Like, this work is the work of how you feel and how you build relationships. And I don't see it as being negative. I see it as the work we're doing with Castle, restorative practices, is about what does a healthy environment look like? And it's the same thing about what do healthy families look like? And healthy families are places that people want to be, not places that necessarily fix. So I want to be careful.
Fair enough.
Of the languages being, this is the work to fix broken kids. This is the work to have healthy school environments, cultures, practices, and powerful relationships.
Fair enough. Careless use of the language by me. Fair, good catch. Fair enough. Sorry about that. My other point remains, I would like to see it be more expansive and inclusive of your, the third bullet under the vision, which is to ignite kids' passions.
Perfect. Noted. I certainly appreciate that, and I'll update this accordingly. I think the other point there is the, where are we in the progress, right? So when this was presented in August.
Yeah.
These were the things that we had done, so, and then the next steps. So appreciate that.
I get it. It's a point in time.
It's more inclusive.
Yeah. Commissioner Frank?
Yeah, and I know you want to be efficient and not repeat what other commissioners have said, but I do want to repeat it because I didn't see it the first time. I missed it. And I appreciate both what the chair said and also Dr. Santelisus. I feel like I'm channeling Commissioner McFadden. It is by, it's sort of a conspicuous omission when we talk about wholeness, and I'm only able to speak about it because I listen to you, Dr. Santelisus, and your team. So is it deliberate to speak of these as our wholeness strategy at the exclusion of arts and other enhancement? What is the reason that our master plan, in speaking to this one, one-third of where our focus is not including the arts and other enhancements?
Sure. So I think that's a fantastic question. And I think there are two ways in which to answer that. One, I think to the point of where are we currently with the student wholeness work and being able to outline those igniting of passions and the enrichment work that we have on the forefront, is not a part of these sort of questioning right now in the master plan. I do think that the way the master plan will be shaped as we move forward focuses much more on enrichment, on SEL, on equity. It's going to look very different under ESSA than it does at present. So the opportunities to tease that out, frankly, too, I will say here, in leveraging the slides that were used back in August for this particular presentation, I will go back and look back through the master plan and see where we do identify enrichment opportunities and things like that as part of that work. It just doesn't happen to be the major focus of the master plan.
And in fairness, and I acknowledge this too with both of our questions, this is a compliance document for the state, so frequently it's just responding to certain things. So it's not the all encompassing, so I think just take it in the spirit that it's offered.
Yes, thank you.
But this document is a different vehicle for what you're communicating. Commissioner Hassan?
So just in the name of specificity of language, just ask my fellow commissioner colleagues, Commissioner Frank especially because you just used the word, just to consider thinking about the arts not as an enrichment, but as a fundamental necessity to learning. And to your point further, you know, where is the body? Where is, where is the artistic expression, the ability to learn metaphor in a really beautiful, engaging way? So if we can shift, just as ESSA has done, away from thinking of it as an extra, a resource, an addition, but as a fundamental foundational academic need.
Thank you all. I really do appreciate that feedback.
I would also just point out for staff that I think what this series of questions also points out for me, when we do our update on where we are with blueprint, not where we are with the compliance doc, no disrespect.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, this is why principals do the same thing with school plans, if they're not meaningful. You slap it on, you say, thank you very much, I finished it, and you move it. So what this flags for me is when we do our blueprint update, we should make sure that we are including those pieces that are about enrichment and expansion, because it's also not that nothing is going on in there. And I think that we should frankly have a public discussion about what the sequencing is, because if everybody thinks everything's coming also at once, you're also mistaken. So I think part of it is making sure we have that robust conversation when we do the blueprint update. Were you going to say something?
That's all, that piece was what I was going to say, is this is where we've started with the wholeness strategy. So people keep hearing about social, emotional learning, restorative practices, and that's where we started, and we really working to get that off the ground with the intensive learning sites. But right now, we are really looking into and building out student wholeness beyond that, and specifically in the area of like student experiences and leadership opportunities. So there is much more to come, and we're working feverishly on that right now.
Commissioner Chinny?
I just want to, not to belabor, but I just want to be certain, and I don't know how we can do this, or if we can possibly do it in some other communication form, to help the community understand the difference in this Bridge to Excellence Master Plan versus the Blueprint for Success, which is truly our system's strategic plan. Because there, it's just like our budget process. If folks don't, don't understand it and they hear master plan, they're assuming that this is what we're, what we're living by, and this is not. This is simply a compliance document. And if it's confusing the board, believe me, it's confusing, you know, mom and dad who's watching. So some way to be certain that people understand that.
Yep. Agreed. And it'll be interesting next year when we switch to a new form and template underneath all of those things, but fortunately, one that actually aligns much more with the work that we've been doing, which will be beneficial for everybody. Thank you all for that very valuable feedback. I appreciate that. So what you'll see coming up in the next couple of slides again is really just a reiteration of the vision for literacy, the areas in which we want to focus in order to meet that vision, and then as presented in August, an update of where we have been. Focus here, intensive learning sites, all schools, and then the standards and curriculum. Leadership is our next area. And again, you see the vision statement as well as the sort of key buckets in which we want to focus in order to help achieve this vision. And an update on that, that strategy here, as shared in August, just the development in role, and then career development. So before I move to the next slide, as I mentioned, these three areas are really part of our larger executive summary in the master plan and helped to paint a bit of a picture of where we are as a district and where we're looking toward as we move forward. The next piece of the executive summary really asks us to review our data. So what you see here are just the highlights that are asked for in the master plan, focusing on park results for ELA, park results for math, and then the HSA government assessment. So what you see here are the results for meeting and exceeding expectations for grades 3, 5, 6, 8, 10, and then grades 3, 5, 6, 8, and Algebra I and Math, and then the HSA government assessment. We conclude our executive summary by highlighting our academic goal. We've shared this a number of times with the board. By 2020, all students will be able to access complex texts and tasks to critically analyze information in order to take a stance, develop a coherent, written, evidence-based argument, and communicate with confidence and conviction at or above grade level. That still maintains as an anchor for us in the work as well as we seek to move those ELA, math, and HSA scores forward. One adjustment that was made to some of the strategies in meeting this associated with the master plan is the third bullet there, the coordinated professional development efforts, to which you will see we identified academic planning as a real key lever for These are the areas within the master plan that we are asked to address. Within each of these areas, our academics office, offices, particularly teaching and learning, you know, work together in order to say where we are. So what does our data currently look like? How has it grown? What strategies we are using in order to meet the needs of our students, and what professional development is being offered to teachers in these particular content areas? The final part of the master plan asks us to identify our assessment strategy. And so what we have been able to provide, again, they've removed a large chart that they used to have us do and have now asked for more of a summary and highlights. And so what we did is provided them with a high-level understanding of our suite of assessments, so common informatives, interim assessments, and summative assessments. In this, we highlighted a few key notable shifts. All of these were presented as well to, I believe, Teaching and Learning Committee back in August with our three-year assessment strategy. So some notable shifts that we shared in the master plan was the addition of an ELA interim assessment, the reduction of the required I-ready administrations to require beginning of year for the majority of schools, and then the removal of the park ELA 11 and Algebra II requirements in terms of assessment. So here we are on October 9th, right? So here we are on October 9th, right? Three lines down, public board presentation. Starting on October 12th, there will be the opportunity, uh, for feedback. I do encourage, and I spoke with, uh, the communications office, so not only will the master plan be posted online for everybody to review, but folks will also be able to email the academics office directly in order to ask any questions, receive any feedback that they have. We offered the same opportunity last year, and I really do encourage people to take us up on it. Last year, we did not receive any feedback. Uh, and so it would be very helpful, um, in order to, to have that coming in from the field. So I do encourage people to take a look, read it over, uh, let us know what you think. So that will be open for roughly a month into November 9th. October 15th, next week, our draft, uh, master plan is to be submitted to MSD. Following that, they provide us with some feedback, review opportunity, clarifying questions, to which we then have to turn around and, and provide back to them. Uh, following that, on November 13th, we will have the public board vote. So this is not a vote opportunity, more just a, a heads up that this is on the horizon. And then November 16th, our final submission is due, uh, to MSD.
Any additional questions for Casey? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do want to thank Casey, um, and I probably shouldn't be saying this at a public meeting, but I guess I will. Um, and that is that often the task of putting together the master plan is not the most desirable of, uh, tasks within the district that people long to do.
I don't know what you're talking about.
So thank you for your work on that.
It's my pleasure.
She smiled through that whole presentation. Next up, uh, presentation on policy, first reader for policy KGF product endorsement.
Good evening. John Walker, CFO. And I am, uh, doing a presentation on the first reader for board policy KGF on product endorsements. Um, the purpose of this policy is to either generally prohibit or narrowly restrict the use of any board, uh, properties for any commercial purposes or for personal financial gain. And of course, it's always the, also the intent of this policy to prohibit any affiliation of board properties with any inappropriate content. The reason that, the challenge or the reason for this policy is we don't have one at this point and we felt that we should have something, uh, in our board policies regarding the use of city schools' properties for the, for this purpose. We have done, or we have planning, uh, community stakeholder engagement to present this policy for P-CAB, the Charter Advisory Board, and PZAZA. And we're also looking for any additional places where we might be able to present, um, this policy. The summary is basically that the board will not permit its name or any of its properties to be used or copied or published for any commercial purp, any commercial purpose, including advertising, or to suggest any endorsement or sponsorship of a third-party product or service without the prior approval of the CEO or designee. There may, there are exceptions in this policy that could possibly include donor gifts, grants, and educational purposes as determined by the CEO or designee. A waiver may also be granted, uh, for institutional or goodwill advertising if it's clearly regarded as being in the best interest of the board and city schools. If there's any doubt, the permission shall be withheld. The policy does not apply to formal marketing agreements approved by the board. The next step is to continue to engage stakeholders for feedback on the policy as proposed. Our communication plan is that school leaders will be directly informed of the policy and their role and authority in that discommunication and take place through the district's leadership action update. And with that, are there any questions?
Commissioner Hassan?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate, um, that one of the things that came out of the policy committee discussion around this is that this is specifically for someone taking our logo off the website and using it to endorse their products. It's not the reverse, um, and we identified a, a policy need. We need to look at what if, you know, Target Corporation wants to sponsor the auditorium, you know, and rebuild it. And that's not what this sort of product endorsement is about. This is simply about the use of our logo and our name to endorse an external product. Just to make sure that's clear for everyone.
Other comments, questions? Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
Our final presentation tonight is on item 18.04, Policy FKA, Public Use of Board School Facilities. First reader?
Good evening. Give me one. I'm Gregory Gamble, and I'm the real estate, um, agent for, uh, for the Office of Real Estate and Permits. And, um, I'll be doing the, um, first reader for the changes that we would like to, um, propose for our policy FKA and Regulation FKA RA. Approximately five years ago, uh, the board approved our policy, I'm sorry. There we go. Approximately five years ago, the board approved our policy. And just over the course of the five years, we determined that there are some changes that, um, we need to make. Uh, one of the first changes that we like to make is that we want to include, um, we have included, uh, more definitions about charter schools, contract schools. Um, and we also put in the process of what a, what a charter or contract school have to do in order to utilize one of our buildings in order to operate. Um, as part of that process, we, um, actually worked with the Office of New Initiatives. We went to several of the advisory boards, um, for the charter schools. And we, and we even spoke to charter operators as we are, um, coming up with these changes to, to our policy and to the guidance document. Also part of this process is that, um, we actually had to define what a 21st century school was. Um, this slide's a little bit deceiving because of all we did was just define what a 21st century school was. Um, there is a MOU and licensing agreement right now for each school that, um, that as the schools come online, my office, we work hand-in-hand with the 21st Century Office and Rexton Parks and go through the language for those individual licensing agreements. Um, that's not reflected in this policy because the MOU takes care of that.
Can I ask a question on that? So this is just the language for the policy, but it's my understanding that that's not completed yet. The MOUs.
So that is correct. So we are, so Nicole Stewart, Director of Planning and Real Estate. So yes, we're still in discussions with, well, the 21st Century Office and Rexton Parks.
So this is just to capture in policy that it needs to, that those MOUs need to exist. It doesn't make a commentary right now on the status of them.
Uh, and that, it doesn't even really mention the MOU or the licensing agreements explicitly.
It says right there, MOU and licensing agreement between Recreation and Parks and the District.
Right. So the actual policy, we're including the definition of 21st century schools, but it doesn't go into any detail about the MOU and the licensing agreement. But this is just an update of sort of where that is. They exist, and it's different than this policy.
I mean, I guess maybe I'm just missing something. So you, it says updates, and I assume that this meant that among the updates to the policies, you're going to include a definition of 21st century schools.
Yes.
And references to the MOUs.
Yeah, it, it looks like, it, it, I, I will say, looking at the way that the slide's formatted, it looks as if both of these elements are part of the update to the actual policy. So if it's not, then we need, we just need to make that clearer.
Yeah, I'm not trying to be anything, actually. I'm just.
Certainly.
Being a little literal.
We should be clear.
Yes. Yeah, no, policy is the one place where we sweat the details. So, great. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner, uh, McFadden?
But do, do we have any updates on the MOU, where, where we are in that process? The agreement process with those 21st century schools?
I do not.
Okay.
We're still in discussions as I understand it.
Okay.
So Commissioner McFadden, I will also say we can get the board an update. Um, Dr. Stewart's correct that, um, we're still in process. Um, the Chief of Staff and, uh, Nicole Price have been the ones working, um, on this element. So I think one of the things we can do is we can revisit that for you and maybe if we note that as an update for the board, we'll get you a direct update. Um, but it just, it doesn't make sense for me to speak about it either when the people who know it best just happen not to be here tonight.
Also too, I've been addressed by a couple of elected officials in regards to this, so I just wanted to know.
No, it's a.
So that I could make sure that I'm saying the right things, um, with them.
The right thing right now is that it's still, it's still being worked out.
Yep.
But I think, um, it's still being worked out. It's more complicated than it meets the eye.
I just wanted to say, when we do get the update, can we know if there is a roadblock? Like, are we experiencing a block?
Yes.
And that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We can do that. And so Acting Chief Grant Skinner, act, excuse me, Acting Chief of Staff, Grant Skinner, um, is, uh, is, is working with CLIA, and we'll make sure that we get that. Back to you. Thank you. We are absolutely. I, I, I don't usually respond to stuff from the audience, but because it's Madam Trueheart, um, I will say this, um, that, that we are. And I think the tension, and I, I mean, I'll just put it out. I mean, we, we've had really good conversations, and it is part of what happens whenever you have common use space, right? And so it's new territory, and we are hearing from the community. And I think that part of what we are working out is the details of use of new space, right? That we all have to be mutually accountable for the upkeep of the space, even though legally and in the eyes of the public, the school system is, is. So if, if something happens to the space, we can have lovely local conversations about it. But in the end, when we have state officials coming to visit, they're not looking to wreck in parks. They're looking to city schools. So we get it. We are committed. We've restated. The board has restated. We understood and stand by 21st century school space, right? Is a community space, but the sharing of that space with educational oversight is just part of the details that we're working at.
One of the main changes that we would like to initiate is currently right now, there's a issue with, um, having small and local community groups use our space for just general meetings. Currently right now, the policy is that any group using our space must provide us with a certificate of liability insurance. And for some of those smaller groups, it's really hard. We're looking at 10, 15 people. And, um, and it makes it kind of challenging for the principals because they want to help out the local group, but they have to follow the policy. And the policy says they have to have, um, um, access to this commercial liability policy. And the groups just can't afford it. So in conjunction with working with Rexton Parks and with the schools and with, um, our own legal department, just for these community groups using this, um, the common space for just their normal meetings, we wanted to have them be able to use that space without having to get a certificate of liability insurance.
Brilliant question. I'm sorry. It's commish, it's Chair Kishani. Sorry. This is one meeting I don't.
But since I was distracted, I appreciate the help. Commissioner Richardson, do you have a question?
I do have a question. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so are we having them sign some sort of waiver of liability if, if we're not mandating that they have their own?
So I will first say that this is one that we would like to do, but we still having, um, conversations with the city to understand, uh, how their process works. So they have, we understand to be a similar, um, model where they're not charging, uh, uh, um, making everyone get the certificate of liability, but we don't yet have enough information, uh, to understand the full scope of what that means, uh, in terms of liability. And so I think that one of the follow-up questions will be, you know, if you don't, then is there a waiver exactly?
Great question, because it's terrific to be accommodating, but, yes. Commissioner Hassan?
So this, this ties this slide back to the other slide, and I don't want to make the conversation go on and on forever. Um, but right now with the 21st century schools that we've opened, without the MOU and without this waiver, are those spaces being accessed and used by the community? Or is the community on hold until we get this completed?
I know for sure they're being used. I've gone to community meetings in 21st century school buildings for.
I mean, and, and I mean, that's the ultimate, is that the community's there, but we also would need to be protected and.
But it sounds like fingers are being crossed as we say, "Yes, you can come meet."
Well, because this is one of the, I mean, th- this is one of the areas. So to, um, the earlier comment, uh, by Ms. Trueheart, this is one of the areas where we got, to the point, lots of feedback from community. There, there was a lot of pushback, a lot of angst around not being able to hold a 10-person meeting in there. And I do think right now where it is happening, it is quite frankly, a fingers crossed while we get things worked out. It is not yet official, um, and it is part of what we're working out. And that's, you know, that's why I'll just continue the refrain of, we are in new territory. And so we're working through the new territory. But this is a wonderful example of frankly what happens when we are listening to community groups and we are hearing the reasonableness, because it is reasonable. The question is how we work it out. So to your point, Commissioner Hassan, the system is not vulnerable in the case that something happens in a 10-person meeting. Um, and then, you know, we have to cover it. So I think right now we're walking the, the balance.
Another change that we were, uh, proposing was, uh, background checks. Currently, the, the policy around background checks is really only for volunteers coming in. There is nothing, there isn't a policy on the books that talks about when we bring in like a business to run, you know, like when they run a before or after-care program, that is exempt from the normal childcare process. Because in the normal childcare process, those background checks are done by the state. That's all said and done. But when those groups are ex- exempt, um, there, there isn't a process for them to come in to get the background checks done here. They can get them someplace else. But if something happens, we're not notified. That provider is notified, whoever initiated that check. So what we're saying here is that we want them to come here to do, to have to do the background checks here. So if God forbid something happens, we're notified first. Then we can notify the school, then we can notify the provider, not where the last person on the total poll to be notified. And with this, we actually worked hand-in-hand with, with, um, the, um, childcare office and with, um, human capital directly. Another change is that, um, uh, there isn't anything really on the books that when you have events where there's like a moon bounce or somebody has like rides and everything, that those providers have to provide us with certificate of liability insurance. So this is just saying that, hey, you know, even though the event holder has one, we want the actual operator of that ride to provide us with a certificate, make sure that everything is covered. And we also were doing changes to our fee structure to make it clear that not every event has to have a school police officer, custodian, or, you know. So this way that it makes it clear to the public that when they look at our fee schedule, they, they know if, if they need to have an event, how much they're going to charge for, get charged for a custodian or a school police officer. And last, just various changes to our application, just to make it, the whole process clearer, not only to the outside, but to the schools, to the principals when they have to fill out the application. And there's any other questions?
Yeah. Uh, Commissioner Hassan and Commissioner Frank?
So one of the things we also talked about in policy was, um, the question of, do we need a different policy? Or in this policy, the way it's written, it's prohibited to do celebrations and events. Are we leaving money on the table with things like the Great City Schools Farm by not being able to have weddings there? Or some of other spaces that are really architecturally beautiful that we may be able to rent out when they're not being used for academic purposes as a revenue generating source? And as this policy's written, that prohibits that. Has there been more thought given to that at all?
So do you want to explain how it currently works when people are required?
Sure. How it currently works is that all the events have to be open to the public. Meaning that you can't have, um, baby shower, um, wedding, um, those type of events. It's, it's just prohibited, that everything has to be open to the public.
But then there is the possibility to get a board waiver, uh, for those activities. And so some of the questions that we had when we presented this. And so some of the questions that we had when we presented this previously, so the ability to get a board waiver is not something that we make public. So you have to know, or when someone calls and has a question for Greg, and he responds and tells them that's a possibility, then they go through the process. I think what we landed on that is there is, there's so much potential for that to be an unwieldy process, and we have a very small real estate office. And so right now, in the way that it's structured, being a board approval, I think in turn, as opposed to us making it more public and then us constantly having to respond to those requests for waivers, I think the way that the current, where we landed was the way the current structure is, is what we would continue with.
We just have a couple of questions. I'm going to read from the actual redlined policy document. This is letter G on page two. It says, Operator Charter and Contract School Lease Agreement. Use of city schools' property by school programs approved to operate under a contract approved by the board. Operator Charter and Contract Schools require a lease approved by the board. What is that referring to? What does the lease refer to?
It's, it's, it said, all of the charter schools and transformation schools who are in our buildings have to have a lease, and all leases are approved by the board.
I mean, is that not under the category of it goes without staying? There is no charter or contract school exists, that exists in our district that doesn't have some sort of contract approved by the board? What is, I'm not, I'm not...
It's just a lease for the building.
So I'm still not following. Can you explain it again?
So as an example, we could have a charter school that has a, you know, they are approved to be a charter school, but then if they're in our building, they also have to have a lease to be in our building.
Okay. So they're oversimplifying, but there are three categories of schools oversimplifying. One is a traditional school. The second is a charter contract school that is in its own building, that it owns. And the third is a contract charter school that is in a city, a district building. So are they all now treated the same? Or are contracts and charters in their own building treated differently under this policy?
Treated differently in terms of...
In terms of any of the way...
So the only...
If you don't have a lease because it's not a district-owned building, do they get, are they treated the same under the policy with respect to the rules?
So I'll just say quickly, in terms of our policy, it's really about just the facility itself and what they're allowed to do and what they aren't allowed to do. And it doesn't reflect back on anything regarding their operation as a charter.
But charters that are not operating in city buildings don't have leases, right?
Yes, they do. Not with us. But we have to, we have to keep as part of our contract requirements, right? A copy of the document that gives them access to that building, be it a lease, a deed.
I don't, I did read this. I don't think that's clear, that what, that a lease with the district is the same of, as a copy that you keep in your files that evidences the contract school's right to occupy the space in which they're operating.
So this, what this, what that language is referring to in this policy is about schools who rent from us. And the key, to add to your categories, a key distinction is charter and contract schools, right, which are funded on their charter formula, pay rent to us for the use of those spaces if they're renting for us. But transformation schools, right, which receive a higher proportion of services in kind, which includes access to a facility, do not pay rent. But we, but we have to have a lease governing their access to that building per audit requirement from a few years ago. So there's different categories there.
But a charter that's operated not in this district-owned space, right? So Henderson-Hoptons, for example, where there's no lease in place with the district. So that's what I'm trying to understand.
But Andy, this is a, this is a policy that only has to do with city buildings.
That's my question.
So why would we reference anything about a school that is in their own building?
That's my question. I'm asking, is there a distinction between facilities that are owned by the district, traditional and charter schools that are operating in district-owned buildings, and charters and contract schools that are in their own, their own facilities?
To the extent that this document determines, you know, what they're able to do in their buildings and what they aren't, yes. So in terms of whether or not they're able to win or whether they're able to make improvements in getting approvals from Design and Construction, are, the policy itself references, or the regulation references the guiding document that has the lease rates in it. So it's more about the details of the usage of the building rather than making any substantive distinct differences between what happens to the...
What are operator-run schools?
Yeah, so all of our schools that are run by outside entities are operator-run schools. We have three types in the district. We have contract schools, we have charter schools, we actually have four, transformation schools, and new school initiative schools. And there are distinctions in terms of their autonomies, in terms of their contract, in terms of legal protections between those school types. So all operator schools that rent facilities from the district require a lease. And the, how that lease works, how that functions, is based on their funding, right? So if you're receiving services in kind, you're funded similarly to traditional schools like transformations and your new school initiative school. They receive the access to the facility in kind, they pay like a dollar a nominal rental fee. But we need a lease agreement that talks about their responsibilities in terms of upkeep, responsibilities in terms of approvals in that lease. Charter and contract schools, right, because they have more flexibility, they can choose to rent from someone else, for example. Their lease has rates, standard rates, which is part of what the policy addresses. But that's why you need an operator catch-all, because it's indicating that all of them require leases, which the policy didn't make clear previously, and which was something that got flagged for us as something that we needed to do. And thus, we wanted to make sure it was codified in policy as well as in practice.
Right. So I probably haven't done my homework in reading this thoroughly. So I'll submit my questions. But my basic question is, when there's no lease in place between the district and a charter or contract school, because the contract and charter school owns its own building, I want to understand how that connects back to this document. And I will read it again, well, it needs to, because there's...
Well, no, it doesn't. So let me, I agree with you that we have to have a copy of that, but our contract, which is also a legal document, dictates that we need to have copies of that document. And our guidance document dictates the approval process, as well as state law, for even being able to be, and that has to come to this board for approval. So if you want to locate in a facility that's outside of the district's portfolio, there's a process for that that requires approval from facilities, approval from the state, and approval from this board.
Yeah, I'll submit my questions.
And then just to point out that, you know, when we look at what this policy is, it's public use of school board facilities. And so that's, the chart wasn't previously a part of this policy where the charter, contract, transformation school piece wasn't in here. It was just a standalone guidance document that facilities and O&amp;I developed. And so the addition is to capture that, those uses by charter schools as a use by the public.
Any other questions? Thanks, and thanks, Angela, for the assist. The last thing, I'm just going to read a list of the upcoming meetings. This Thursday at 6:00, as previously mentioned, there's going to be a public board forum on school police and carrying weapons. Tuesday the 16th at 10:00 a.m., the Operations Committee will meet in this room. Tuesday the 16th at 3:30, the Policy Committee will meet in this room. Board will meet in executive session at 3:00 on the 23rd upstairs. Public board meeting, the next one, will be at 5:00 on the 23rd here. The next P-CAB meeting in this room on Thursday the 25th at 6:30. And the next Teaching and Learning Committee will be Tuesday, November 5th at 3:30. Anything else for the good of the whole? We are officially adjourned. You know, I'm going to eventually get that right. Can I have a motion?
School spending meeting.
Thank you. As previously referenced by Madam Trueheart, the next school funding transparency meeting is meeting with a panel, but it is open for observation by the public so that there can be full transparency about the funding formula, funding mechanisms and sources of funding for all schools, is on Wednesday, October 13th, in the library at Frederick Douglas High School, and that is posted on the website. Thank you very much for that. Thank you. So that was for the good of the whole. Anything else? Motion to adjourn, that would be something else. Motion made by Commissioner Hassan, second by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor. Motion passes 9-0. We are officially adjourned.